Good evening, ladies. I want to welcome all of you to the Salem-Kaiser School Board for September 25th. Glad to see you all came this evening. Would you like to join me, please, with the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's nice for me, huh? Tonight we are missing Jim Green and Chuck Lee and Marty Hyen. But we do have a quorum. We have enough, so we're off and running. There are no agenda modifications tonight. I will point out before we start, the big mystery of always these meetings, we have another new clock up there. And remember, we've changed from all these. This time, this, I hope, is our last selection. So that will time people speaking as usual. And I hope it's very pleasant and has a nice melodious sound. Maybe they've heard it, and maybe it isn't quite as melodious as I thought.
We'll have a new one next week.
Yes. Okay. The first thing we'll go to is public comment. And I want to thank, of course, all of you in advance for coming this evening. The board accepts public comment at its regular business meetings, the second Tuesday of each month. Work sessions such as tonight, on the fourth Tuesday of the month, do not include public comment. Tonight's meeting was originally scheduled as a work session. However, since an action item was added to the agenda, we want to be sure the public has an opportunity to speak on that particular item. With that in mind, tonight, we'll take public comment on the action item only, which is Agenda Number Three: Approval of the Collective Bargaining Agreement between the District and Ask ESP. As a reminder, you will have three minutes to speak. You will know when your time has ended, when the clock buzzes. Oh, there it is.
She's melodiously.
I don't see her now. Rita? Rita Glass? You are the -- there you are. You are the first speaker this morning -- or this evening.
Morning all over again. Good evening. Chairperson Kathy Goss and Assistant Vice Chair Sharon Blassi, Superintendent, members of the board, Mr. Decopoulos as well. Thank you for being here to approve our contract for our ESPs with the district. I'd like to thank, at this time, your team from the HR department, John Bate, Catherine Novy, Paul Rains, Mitch Hamilton, Gwen Bruyefink, and Katherine Johnston, who served as the district's team. And I'd like to give a special thank you to the Ask ESP team, our chair Nancy Schrepper, Jeff Bond from Transportation, Edie Buchanan from K-12 Education, Jeff Jaben from Custodial, Anavia Lobos from Waldo as Office Manager, and Carol Burks as our Special Programs IA too. We worked hard, we worked long, and we're pleased to say that we have finally come up with an agreement. And you will hear more from us during the year at your regular school board meetings. So thank you again for all the hard work that your team, on your behalf, worked, and our team as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Melodious. That'd be the word I'd use.
To each their own. Nancy Schrepper.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I just wanted to say thank you to the board for hearing our concerns about the contract. I want to say thank you to your bargaining team for bringing and presenting to you our concerns. It was a tough one, but I think it's important for us to not look at each other as adversaries, but look as partners, so that we can better serve the students of our district. Thank you.
Thank you. The last speaker will be Jeff Bond.
I'd just like to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to work with the district to open up the contract, the full contract. And the agreement that we came with, I really think is a very good one for both parties. And I think it will help bring in more opportunities for employees, for new hires, and to keep our regular people we already have. And thank you so much.
This may not last forever. We may sit -- we may order one more clock. Third action items for tonight. Tonight's action item is approval of the 2018-2023 Collective Bargaining Agreement between Salem-Kaiser School District 24J and the Association of Salem-Kaiser Education Support Professionals. Is there a motion to approve the agreement?
I saw move.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Where did the second come? Jesse? Okay, thank you. We will now vote on the motion. Oh, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All those against by nay. Seeing none, the motion passes unanimously. For, none. Thank you. I think we need to sign the contract now.
We need to sign the contract now. It is a fun part. You get to be the signer, Kathy.
I'm pleased to have Chairperson Goss come up, and also Rita and Nancy, so that you can sign the agreement.
John, would you be sure to thank the district bargaining team on behalf of the board and on behalf of the administration, and then to Rita, Nancy, and the bargaining team, members that were here, anyone who's absent. Really, it's a hard process to engage, and sometimes it feels, again, positional, but both teams, it felt like, really persisted and worked through the process. So thank you for your hard work, and if you'd thank anyone who wasn't here tonight.
Absolutely. And I would just share with the board that the Ask ESP team worked very hard and diligently, and it was a pleasure to go through the process with them.
We'll move on to the work session this evening, and I'll turn that over to Superintendent Perry.
All right. This work session tonight will be presented by Lynda Myers, our Director of Strategic Initiatives. And this is related to two items in the results policy. One is around a data dashboard, and then another is how do we use data to monitor schools. So Lynda's going to walk you through the dashboard. She didn't provide handouts tonight on purpose, because it isn't as much about what the data says as about you being able to see the system. So she'll walk through it, and if we have additional questions and things afterwards, we can always dig in a little deeper at a future time. So Lynda, I'll let you take it.
All right. So that was a nice kickoff. And I think what I want you to hear is that the intent of the presentation for you tonight is to demonstrate the different dashboards that we have for analyzing data, and how we utilize the information from those dashboards to make educational and instructional decisions. So as we look at data, you'll see some graphs, for instance, state test scores. And just to reiterate, we're not going to drill down into what that data is actually telling us, but rather taking a look at some of the displays, and then some examples of how we might use that. So the results policy from the school board, this is item number four, clearly directs the superintendent to develop a data system that will allow the board to monitor the district's progress towards increasing the graduation rates and lowering the dropout rate. The data system will include key data points, such as third grade reading, chronic absenteeism, student engagement in programs which boost the graduation rate, and an early warning system for students with the potential to drop out. So we'll look at some features of our dashboards. We actually have two separate data dashboards, and those are designed to meet two different needs. So last year, a newly designed department inside of Technology and Information Services, our Data Research and Assessment Office, collaborated with district leadership to identify what kind of data we would like to see that wasn't currently available. So Spark was designed by that office within the district and provides a real-time visual summary of student achievement metrics. Additionally, we have a system from Willamette ESD, and that has two components. There's a data dashboard component, and there is an early identification and intervention system. And again, the dashboard gives us a summary of metrics. The dashboard from Willamette ESD allows us to do some pretty significant drill down to look at different subgroups, different schools, different grade levels. And the early identification and intervention system of the ESD dashboard allows us to identify risk factors based upon attendance, behavior, any metrics, actually, that we wish to assign a risk factor to. We can then look at that data on an individual student basis. So those are the two places that we go for information. This is a screenshot, just a visual, of something that I might pull on the Spark dashboard. This particular dashboard helps us monitor if students are on track with graduation rates. So this combines the number of credits earned by students, those are the blue bars on the bottom, and considers the proficiency in essential skills of reading, writing, and math. Those are the green bars on the top. The credits completed are by grade level across the bottom, and up at the top, we just look at 11th and 12th graders. This is a real-time visual summary of those metrics. And so there are multiple data sources that pull this information together, and those are updated nightly. And that target, that 82% number in the bottom right-hand corner, gives us a quick snapshot of about where we are today for graduation rates. This is an old screenshot. You wouldn't want me to pull a screenshot, actually literally, from today with three weeks of school under our belt, but this is the kind of thing that we can monitor as we move along through the year. This is another visual from Spark. I think it's important for you to know that the benefit of building our own system internally is that we can capture internal indicators that are unique to our own data systems. So we have talked with the board before about our beliefs that students who are engaged in school, be it CTE courses, athletics, music, APIB, students who are engaged in something, the likelihood that those students will graduate is much higher than when compared to students who are not engaged in any of those sorts of activities. So this visual is actually built to help us monitor the level of student engagement. The round pie chart is a tally that says, percentage-wise of that pie, how many students are engaged in one activity? How many students are engaged in two activities? How many students are not engaged in any activities? The block chart on the lower left allows us to begin to drill into the mix of how many students are involved in multiple activities, and what are those multiple activities? This is a current screenshot, so there is not very much data in there from this early in the year. Obviously, as we get farther along into the school year, as we exit fall sports and move into winter sports, and as students move into second semester, of course, work this populates and gets -- we can get a lot of rich information out of this particular dashboard. So those are some examples from Spark. When we look at an example from the ESD dashboard, this is a very typical dataset. We've been able to access this kind of data for many, many years. This is simply, what are our scores on the smarter-balanced state assessment by grade level? So the different color bars indicate the level of achievement, the grade levels down the left-hand side. But the power of the ESD system is now we have significant drill-down capabilities. So if we had questions and wanted some information on our EL students, so how did our EL students do on the ESPAC state assessment? Not only can I drill down to look at EL students as a group, I actually can drill down and look at the kind of EL that we're looking at. So starting at the bottom, you have students who are considered English learners. Moving up, that next line says, students who were ineligible for services, meaning their language proficiency was actually too high to enter the program. Students who are monitored, which means they've been exited from the program. Students who were not EL in the first place, post-monitored. That means they've been exited from the program more than two years ago. And students whose families refused services for them in the beginning. So this sort of drill-down capability is significant and allows us to really flesh out the kinds of growth patterns or trends that we might be seeing within our subgroups. Additionally, you don't need to worry about what this data is saying. I understand that it's very, very tiny. But for tonight's purpose, rather than looking at what the numbers are telling us, I wanted to focus on how we could use some data like this in our decision-making. So this graph shows us student achievement on state assessments by the primary language spoken by the student. So something like this could be utilized for us to evaluate the effectiveness of our EL programming, not just for our students who speak Spanish, but potentially how are our programming support students who speak the multiplicity of any one of these other languages listed here. So there is an additional point in the results policy, in addition to just the creation and generation of a data system. This is line item number five on the results policy. The superintendent will establish systems and routines to demonstrate to the board regular monitoring of individual school performance and to ensure an appropriate response. We have several data routines that help leaders monitor individual school performance. One of those routines is our ninth-grade success teams. Every high school, each high school, has identified a group of committed educators who will focus on data and intentionally form relationships with students. So our ninth-grade success teams are looking at five indicators: A, B, C, D, E. So attendance, behavior, course success, dropout prevention, and everybody graduates. These are two visual summaries pulled from the Willamette ESD dashboard. These happen to be at-risk indicators for attendance, and then some discipline data. And this dashboard allows the teams to set up groups and keep track of students who may be at risk in any one of those five indicators. Additionally, the superintendent's cabinet has established a weekly data monitoring routine. We call this our SMART routine. SMART stands for Systems Monitoring and Academic Review Team. So we have agreed upon data points that we want to review throughout the year. Most of those are assigned based upon where they fall within the calendar. So for example, when elementary students have completed their universal screener, their EZCBM tests in reading and math, following the close of that fall testing window, we will come together as cabinet and do a data routine around those EZCBM scores. So we will review the data, and then we will ask some of those additional questions. What is the data telling us? And specifically, how will we respond? That might move us into action planning and some strategy steps into what we want to actually do to move forward in response to the data. And additionally, what do we need to communicate to principals or staff? That could mean we ask the communications office to do a celebration of some sort of student achievement or growth indicator. That could be a communication strategy. Or it might mean that we alert principals to a trend that we're identifying in the data, something that we're noting. And so that listing there just is a sample of a handful of weeks in mid-fall, and those are the data points that cabinet will be reviewing. So not only does cabinet work together as a whole, individual cabinet leaders do individual school monitoring of distinct data points. This actually is a graphic that is hand-designed to answer some very specific questions about a very targeted population. So this happens to be a graphic. The green outline shows you Leslie Middle School's attendance boundary. Leslie Middle School, for several years in a row, has had the lowest attendance rate, although Leslie is not one of our high -- it is a high-need school, but it would not be considered the highest-need school. That prompted some questions, and so the red dots on this map indicate the home locations of students who were absent more than 20% of the time. So those are kids that missed about 40 days of school last year. And what the level director started to see was there appear to be some condensed dots in neighborhoods, and does that begin to indicate that we have some barriers in place, potentially with transportation, or could be school start times? Are there things that we need to consider unpacking based upon what this kind of data could potentially be telling us? And after we look at all these different kinds of datasets, then we begin to discuss what we're learning from the data and how are we going to respond. So our middle school teams have increased a few hours of classified staff in each building in order to prioritize making personal telephone calls to students when they have an unexcused absence. So the personal telephone call is in addition to the robo-dialer, your child was marked absent, period three, whatever the computer-based dialer are. So the data here represents one middle school and demonstrates how many full-day absences were reported on those dates, how many of those full-day absences were unexcused, and how many personal phone calls were made in response to those unexcused absences. So in that time period, from September 10th to September 20th, about the first two weeks of school, our middle schools made over 1,000 personalized telephone calls to families. In addition to middle school, we are focusing, part of our Everyday 24J initiative is looking at kindergarten attendance. Research is pretty clear that strong attendance patterns established in kindergarten will follow students throughout their educational career. So today is day 10 for kindergarten students. Today's their 10th day of school. So tomorrow morning, we will run a report listing the kindergarten students who have missed three or four days of school so far. We'll generate those lists by school. That information will go to principals, and those principals will ensure that personal contact is made with the families of those kindergarten students. Then on top of students who have missed three or four days, we'll back up just a little bit and identify the names and addresses of kinders who have missed two days of school, and they will get a friendly postcard, "We miss you. Hurry back to school. We've got lots of great things going on." So two strategies that are in place as early as this week for attendance. So we have worked data review into our regular monitoring routines, and essentially, it includes these four aspects: we plan, we do, we check, and we act. And I believe that our commitment to doing our data routines on a more regular basis will allow us to get you more timely information and to be responsive to the kinds of data that's important to you, whether that's connected to the strategic plan, or an executive limitation, or the results policy. So that kind of covers the work that we have jumped into thus far the fall.
I have one.
Paul?
The postcards that you're sending out in English and Spanish?
I have not seen the postcard yet. They were just getting printed, and I'm assuming that they will be translated. Certainly, we could utilize language services to do them in multiple languages.
That's what I was curious about.
Yeah. Yep, we'll make that a priority. Absolutely.
Sharon?
Just a couple of clarifications. So on that, the one that Paul was just referring to, that's just for kindergarten? We're only doing that at the kindergarten level so far?
For right now, we are starting that at the kindergarten level. So families get contacted by the automated telephone system whenever their child is absent. So our elementary schools already have that routine in place. We're prioritizing the personal telephone calls first to our kindergarteners to really establish solid, good habits. If we have the capacity to extend that to first grade, I think that would be a natural target as well, but we haven't made any of those decisions yet.
Each of the schools has a toolkit on attendance, and they all have the postcards. So some schools or some individual teachers may also do those. This was just one thing we tried to, for kindergarten, tried to take it from the school to do it from the district.
So both. Would it be possible at all for us to have a monthly report, just a few-minute report, and perhaps choose a grade level and show us what's changed since the first of the year, how they're doing? So some of that information comes here.
I think if the board were to identify an indicator or two, and potentially related to the Everyday 24J Attendance Initiative, I think we certainly could get you in the routine of, particularly if we settle on some visual metrics that are standardized, until you get used to seeing the same metric over time. Yeah, that's -- that would certainly be a request that we could accommodate.
Good. Would like that. Jesse?
I agree with Kathy. I think I would like to see that as well. And I also wanted to ask, the postcard, is that something that we just started doing this year? Okay.
On a district-wide level, individual schools may have had something like that in place previously, but this is a kind of a 30,000-foot attack scheme.
Then I had one other question. We showed the map of Leslie, and when we were talking -- because that kind of interested me, because it kind of goes deeper than some of the other higher-up things. And when you're identifying, like, the individual houses and things, you were talking, maybe a transportation barrier or something. Were we able to find what it was, and what did we do about it? Or is that just brand-new? We don't know yet?
Brand-new. Yep. That's a brand-new. And actually, that particular metric is hand-generated. That's not generated by the computer system, so it's -- that one is particularly labor-intensive and was done as a very specific response to an issue at Leslie, trying to answer a specific question. Do we have barriers in place that are making it difficult for students who live, say, in the Richmond area, to actually get to Leslie as their home middle school?
Okay. Is there one, like, is this like a new thing that we've done, or have we done this before with other places?
I don't believe that it has been done before. We have one level director who, again, was seeking some very specific information.
I like it. I think it's a good idea.
It's a great idea, yeah.
Sharon?
So it's interesting, though, you said that has to be done by hand, so we don't have access to something like GIS or something where you can plug in data points and have it mapped for us?
We probably could. So it's a multi-step effort at this point. So it's taking, you pull the attendance data, and then you pull the student associated with that to get a home address. You probably, I'm sure there's a system, some sort of software that you could plug in. in. At this point, it was faster and felt more efficient to just take the map and start plotting things.
I had one, just one more question. When you were talking about the risk indicators that comes from the WSD detailed-level data, you were talking about sharing that with administrators and teams. At what point will we identify those risk factors that may be greater than just the chronic absenteeism? Do we share it with the parents?
So, the, the concept of risk factors is something that we have the ability to customize. So, the ESD builds the framework, but then we say we want to include behavior as a risk factor. And then we identify at what point is that considered a high level of risk? Is four behavior referrals high risk? So, we have to frame all of that and we got to set those levels. And the initial intent of all of that is informing teams to ensure that we have the right sort of supports and interventions in place, be that an intervention for behavior, an intervention for academics, or an intervention for attendance. At this point, school-specific teams, whether it's a response to intervention team or like an SST care team type of model, at what point parents actually get pulled into that conversation probably varies at a school level. And Sharon, I think that would be probably the next place for us to have some district-wide conversations about a consist, building a consistent expectation for, at this point, parents are notified and brought into the conversation.
I would agree. Yep. So, I just, and I just want to add two things. The ninth grade success teams actually have access to the dashboard themselves, so we don't have to take the data and give it to them. They can monitor it on a daily basis. And then those ninth grade success teams at every one of our high schools, well, then they will plan how they're going to reengage either parents and students on how to get them on track, because we want to have that, that's part of that early warning system. So, without the, having the ninth grade success team then take the data that those kids at risk, they'll then create what are those interventions and how do you bring parents in at that point? And they have just launched. So, the same question I, I think I ask every, every meeting. So, we know that there are risk factors at ninth grade and we're sharing data, but, and some of our schools do a great job at the eighth grade level, but how does this connect eighth grade to ninth grade? So, if, say, at Leslie, there's severe chronic absenteeism due to transportation or whatever it might be, how are we sharing that with South before they get there?
So, as just one specific example, we mapped out all of the eighth grade attendance data by middle school across the district and then identified what we would consider somewhat low-hanging fruit. So, students who had 16 to 20 absences, so not our worst chronic absenteeism offenders, but students who were close enough that it was some effort, we could get them back to being regular attenders. And then those middle school names were distributed out to now where they are attending high school with an ask for those teams to make a connection with those students and identifying those as basically fringe attenders, so they're close, but we had some attendance issues last year in eighth grade. That's one place where we're able to make a really distinct connection.
Any other questions? What are we doing for parents that are divorced or separated? Do you notice this go out normally to each parent or do they choose one of the two and then do we figure out actually if it's ever getting to the second parent?
Yeah, that's a really good question. I hesitate to answer that. Both parents would have access to that information. I just don't know whether the automatic calling system goes to a primary number or automatically goes to both.
I also have a comment on this, that schools are provided with any custody orders. And so, if there was a custody order that said, this, this is the sole custodian of, of the student, in certain circumstances, this, the non-custodial parent can ask for, for data, but they wouldn't have the, the general same access that the sole custodial parent would have. And so, in those situations, the, the schools, it's not a one-size-fits-all for how the schools interface with the non-custodial parent and the custodial parent.
I've noticed the problems seem to come up often when it's a 50-50 custody thing and neither one is identified as, as having more say-so than the other.
Well, my, my experience, because I get into this about twice or three times a week with individual schools, is there's no, there's no clear pattern. We have very successful joint custodial parents who, who share information and just fine and we have difficult situations. We have parents who have, who have separated but have no custody order. And those are typically the most challenging because each parent has the same rights to both, to the children, but the child's living with one parent and there's no judicial determination of our responsibilities vis-a-vis this parent versus that. And so, that typically is more challenging. But, but the school, the school office staff, my hat goes off to them because they're, they're trained, they're super-good at trying to resolve these kinds of problems.
Good. Good. That makes me more comfortable. Any other questions or comments? I think that rounds it off for the night. I want to thank each one of you for coming. I know you've given up part of your evening this week to come and check on your job or your, your children and it's very much appreciated. And strong family produces strong children and good, good learners. So, thank you for coming. Oh, for adjourned.